Did look at the numbers for Dwyer and Folsie and Edison and Jefferson and Elizabeth High School. And we are still going up. They have been up in the numbers compared to last year. We are gonna come out with that information very shortly, but every high school in our district has, as of today, we just found out, have gone up in their scores immensely. And we're very proud of that, but we haven't released that out to the public yet. So we're still looking at other data. We're still making sure that we are not, you know, misrepresenting our district. And we want to make sure. But that information will be out very shortly. We just heard of that today.
Pastor, if I may ask, can we either do the questions that you received first? And then open it up to the public? Because there may be some duplicity in the questions that are being asked out of the front as opposed to the rear. Some people were here at six. Some people were here at six, because they may be waiting for a long time to get their question answered. Or maybe if we can do that and then open it up to the floor. Okay, thank you.
And all parents, Commissioner, I would expect from my Hispanic brothers, this is a little bit American English language.
I'd like to ask you a question.
Absolutely. This one parent says that all kids are required to dress the same, which means they wear the same uniform. That all children should receive the same education. All schools, with that said, all schools should be Blue River Schools.
I agree. We're working towards that.
Yeah, I do agree. Every school should be a Blue River School. We're moving towards that. But there's a lot of things going on. We have a lot of social, economic issues in the city. It depends on the parents. Have you thought of this? I'm a social worker. I deal with this every day. Do you see that some children at home? We have single parents home. There's drug addiction. There's abandonment. There is parents that have to go to work. They cannot give a lot of attention to the children. So there's a lot of factors involved in all this. It's not only the school's responsibility. It's also the parents' responsibility. And unfortunately, because of the social issues that we're facing right now, the parents cannot deal with it. There's a lot of parents that have to go to counseling. We have children with a lot of emotional behavioral issues right now. So it's a lot of things involved. It's not only the school, but it's a total community involvement. Also, I want to address these questions. And it has to deal with, one of them says that, you know, why your child's going to school one and not twenty-eight? And the other one, I would like my child not, you know, supposed to go to school twenty. I want to say this in Spanish, but at least you have me in the clear. But these questions are all about. One of the questions is, la niña va a la escuela uno y le gustaría que viniera a esta escuela. And the other one says que el niño o la niña va a la escuela 20 y en realidad la madre no quiere que vaya allá. La respuesta es muy simple. En todos los distritos escolares, no solamente de Elizabeth, se requiere la distribución del distrito. O sea, donde usted vive, se divide las calles, de cierta calle a cierta calle está la escuela. Todos los distritos son así. Elizabeth tiene la ventaja de que puede poner sus niños en el sistema de lotería. O sea que las academias como la 26, como la escuela 30, como la 29, todos ustedes pueden poner a sus niños en la lotería y ahí se vende los niños. O no cualifican. Para los niños con talento es basado académicamente. Eso quiere decir que tienen que pasar intens y tienen que tener los grados adecuados para poder ponerse al régimen de esas escuelas. Esas escuelas son muy estrechas. Tienen un sistema más avanzado. Y todos nuestros niños aprenden a una manera diferente. No todos aprenden lo mismo. No podemos demandar a los grupos de nuestros niños algo que no nos pueden dar. Eso es realmente individual. Cada niño es individual. No porque uno de los chiquitos va a la escuela con talento, otro niño tiene que ir. Debemos considerar eso. El que se siente en la clase son nuestros niños. Nos somos nosotros. Nuestro orgullo, lo que queramos que ellos sean. No le podemos exigir algo que ellos no nos pueden dar. Basically, I explained to the parents that distribution of the district. It's not only Elizabeth, it's every district in the state. Elizabeth has the advantage that we have the academies that evolved by lottery system. It's a fair system like Mr. Trivio was saying before. These children didn't, you know, didn't win the lottery and they continue very proudly to come to this school. Also, I spoke a little bit about the intelligence and that's academically oriented, okay? We cannot give anything to our children. They have to pass a test to qualify for the program. There's certain policies that need to be followed in every district. Academically and also every child has to have, it has to deal with the behaviors. You break the rules, like in every class, you break the rules, the consequences for your behaviors. And it doesn't really matter whether it's a district that's talented, it's a regular school or it's an academy. That's the law, that's the way things are in this district. It's a structured system.
You have another question?
It's the same thing. I answer don't.
Okay, James.
This is a, I feel this is a paraphernalia. It's two parents, two kids, there's an issue here in the regard to autism. My nephew has autism. And these two parents, one parent says, why aren't there schools for autism in Elizabeth? And the other parent says, I have a son who's in the autism program around the way here, Academy, in school 30. So my question is, what are the new programs you have for autism in Elizabeth Public Schools? You are now implementing, that you are now implementing. I have other children in school 28 in kindergarten. I enrolled her in a lottery earlier. Three years ago until now, I haven't heard anything yet.
Okay, I could address the autistic population. I have been working with the autistic population over eighteen years. I think ever since we find out that autism, it has increased by the past few years. With the children with autism, we don't know the cure. We know how to give, provide the services. We know that there's progress. It's neurologically based. It is manifested by social or communication. There are different types of programs. I know school 30 has an excellent program as well as school one. They both have the ADA, Applied Behavioral Analysis. They all work on behavioral plans. They have a CDY, it's a behavioral person that works and it works with them as well as all the staff members. They have the speech therapies, occupational therapies. Some of these children could be self-protecting. There are different types of autism. That includes the inclusion, there are children that are mainstream with one-on-one support systems. So every child is different. Implementing a program is very difficult because every time, and I'm doing this now, when you sit with your specialized person, the child site team, every time you sit with them, every year, to face this review and make change. Is that the case of the progress of the child? Also, what we have in district is excellent. There are other children that are out of district because they cannot function within the district. They have other special needs, significant and unique to them. And sometimes we do send children out of district. I have worked with that population and probably is the hardest one to deal with because our children severely with autistic tendencies that require specialized tools that only are geared for children with autism.
We're gonna go through questions. This one parent said, why does the Elizabeth Board of Education paint a pretty picture when we experience a high drop out rate? How can we not discuss that?
Okay, I gotta answer, I've heard that many times. Being involved in the school system. And our mission as educators is to provide a free and a proper education to all. Teachers and administrators were very, very hard to accomplish this. That's our mission. Any teacher that's sick and is trying to educate the children is doing a hard, the best they can. However, and I'm talking from my heart, this is not the board member. This is the social worker. Like I said before, that socioeconomic factor affects everything. With the drug addiction, alcoholism, whether it's domestic violence, single parents, abandonment. Everything, everything affects a child's education. There are times, I have every day in my life, that's what I see, that's what I deal with. Do we try to retain these children? Yes, we do. There are children that are sixteen, parents sign, they drop them out of school because sometimes they cannot afford to provide for their children, so they have to go out and work. Sometimes they have a little part-time and they feel, oh, I don't have to do anything else. I need to go to work. I like the money. That's fine with me. They don't think that they don't need anything. They're just good enough, working in a factory, working in Burger King or McDonald's because they're making a little bit of money. And it's our job as parents, educate our children. Tell them that right now, a high school education is not enough. We all know this. And there's a lot of things that, you know, we have to consider. It's not dropping out of school. It's what we live in. What can we provide for our children? It's very hard. If you have a single parent that, well, it's abandonment, you know, my husband abandoned me. I cannot provide the same lifestyle that we had before, before we had two kids. Now it's one, he's not providing child support, whatever the case may be. Some of our children do get involved. Okay, well, and I got to... You know, you cannot tell it, but it has to do a lot with it. This dropout rate involves every single one of the districts in the entire United States. It doesn't, if it's in affluent area or could be low performing, it doesn't really matter where it's located. It has to do with this.
Yes, as she stated, it's a societal issue. It's not an issue that is just in Elizabeth. It's happening in every community throughout every city and other state in the country. One of the things that we did when we went through our excellent blueprint two, when we decided to have themed high schools throughout the district, it gave those kids that were going into high school a different perspective and a different opportunity to study something different that they might be more inclined to finish their high school career. So we opened William McAllen Leadership Academy. We opened Johnny Dwyer Technology Academy. So students in A3 would have choices that would best align to what their wants and what their career aspirations would be. And we're happy to say that that program is now in its third year and moving along nicely. And as I mentioned, it's something that's a slow process, but we are encouraged and are anxiously awaiting that this program, once it's fully accepted by the community, the dropout rates will get smaller and smaller every year.
And as Commissioner Fernando, Vice President Fernando Nesta said, the other thing I wanted to say in regards to that, the question was why we are addressing that? We are addressing it. We don't address a lot of the negative because we sit back behind the scenes, hours and hours of meetings, trying to discuss the best way to give the children, to stop the dropout rate, to give the children the best education any day. We try to focus on the positive because, you know, when children see positives, they respond positively. So we don't dwell on the negative. We actually work on that to try to make it better. Of course, we've done a number of different things. As Mr. Nesta said, we've actually implemented the six different high schools, which we feel will now give our high schoolers, our high school students, direction. Once they get that kind of direction, you start to see that the culture of the high school then starts to change. We're not really gonna see, as I said before, the fruits of those labor until everything starts to go into the system and we then can calculate or we then can monitor and at least have the data to show that the process is working. So along the line, it takes time. It isn't a sprint. It is definitely something that takes time. And eventually, they will get there. We know that there's a big high school dropout. We acknowledge all of that, but it doesn't get fixed overnight. And we don't want to do a quick fix overnight because we want to make sure that we're doing the right things for our kids. So we ask that the parents would help us, you know, communicate to us how you feel, how things are going, so we can know what we need to address and those issues and those concerns that you have. So that's why, you know, these things take time. And of course, it takes collaborative effort, which includes parent, student person, the student child, and the administration to work together collaboratively so that we can make sure that they are getting everything that they want. As far as getting ahead in the education.
I want to give the question that we had over at the meeting you all had at Pastor Dixon's church. And that question, they answered for us. And I think you all would like to hear the answer to it as well. I read it on one of the sheets, and that is, why don't you have the public speaking in the beginning instead of the way it is now in the end? And I think many of you have that same concern. Well, I'm gonna let them respond to that because I know that was a concern that we had. But after hearing why they're doing, why they changed it the way they changed it, I think it will start making sense once you hear what their response is.
Well, I'm gonna say that there's two reasons why it was done the way that it was done. One of the reasons why was because in the past, we've had a lot of things going on during the public speaking portion, which we were very concerned about because we were there to do business in public. We weren't there to have a meeting of the public. And the reason why is because we're required by law to look at achievement and recognition during a board school, a board meeting. That's a requirement. So we looked at those things that were happening and we said, you know, there are children who watch this on Saturdays when it's here. And there were people calling names and so on and so forth. So in our training process, we realized that we needed to make a policy on, well, during one of the, for the board meetings, in other words. And we did that. We set a policy. We recognize acknowledgement. We recognize achievement. Well, we recognize achievement. We recognize a lot of the things that are geared towards our staff and students. So that's what we are required to do by law. And the reason why we take care of the children first is because they need to get home. And then that part of the meeting is done and done. Now, my concern is this. There are people who complain and say that we're not addressing the issue about whatever's going on. I can say this as a parent too. I'm not gonna wait till a board meeting if I have a really serious problem. If I have a problem with something in the school or with something going on with my child, there are other avenues that I would take. I would not wait for the one board meeting a month to take care of it. So if it is an important issue, don't wait until that day. You take care of it right away because it's your child that we're talking about. So that is one of the things that we looked at and said, if it's important enough, the community will come out and that night is supposed to be geared towards student achievement and faculty acknowledgement and those types of events. We don't do it on another night because sometimes that's asking parents to come out two nights in a month or other things like that. There are a lot of parents and a lot of kids in the district. We're talking over 23,000. So we try our best to meet the needs of the majority of those who need to come out. Don't wait. I recommend not to wait until a board meeting because if it's really that important, you're not gonna wait till a board meeting to address the board. So that's one of the reasons why, a number of different reasons why we do the board meeting the way that we actually do it.
Another thing, this is another thing about that. Now let's look at tonight. The other problem that you had at the board meetings is everybody's not there to discuss the welfare of their children. And so what some people do, they take up all the time, okay? When concerned parents like yourself that are here tonight, you would think this place would be full of more concerned parents. But they come and they just want to disrupt everything. They want to take two hours talking about nothing. And so it takes away your concerns. And what we have to start doing is playing a part in also saying to the community that come here wanting to disrupt, say, hey, listen, wait a second. We ain't here for that. This is not what this is about. This is about the concern that you all bring up tonight. So that if you come up with a solution, you see how three groups, parents, school system, and you know about faith-based organizations in this community. It's gonna take all three of us. It's gonna take us teaching them the same thing. One of the things that they put on BET, many of you watch BET, they have churches now. They're calling on churches to adopt the school, to get involved. That's why I'm here. I want to be involved. And so what we do is, when the parents, when the school sends home this checklist, kids need to be reading, maybe 20 minutes a day. Instead of going to PlayStation and Nintendo and all of them, they need to grab a book instead of about 20 minutes reading a book. And what we need to do as parents, you sign off on it, the school signs off on it, and whatever your religion is, whether you're Catholic or whatever, you don't go nowhere. Find a grocery store. Find somebody that want to participate in any of this. But we have too many people coming to the board meetings, taking up unnecessary time, talking about things that don't make sense. And so when you want to talk, it's 10 o'clock at night. Well, here's what I suggest. And then I'm gonna let you talk. Let me know if the trouble is 10 o'clock. And what we need to do is, we're gonna stay true to the time. What we need to do is try to set up another date. And I'm sure these commissioners, just one second. I'm sure that these commissioners who came tonight, they're here because they want to hear your concerns. They want to be a part. Don't listen to nobody else. They're here because they want to make a difference with you. They're not gonna do it by themselves. They need your cooperation. We need everybody to play a part of this. And so let's try to strategize another date where we can come back and now we know what we're gonna do. We'll get right down to business. We know what we need to do. We get right down to business. And they are here because they're concerned. And I'm upset because ain't nobody here.
The whole first hour, for God's respect, the whole first hour, I mean, there were things that were going on that weren't pertaining to what we really wanted, the issues that we really wanted to get down to. So you see how you guys were here for saying, well, these are the questions that need to be addressed? If we would've started that from the beginning instead of you guys putting on a video trying to discredit the Star Legend? Like these are things also that if you're saying that the political stuff is important, then why was that even on there in the beginning? So we could've just started from where we started now and addressed the issues that we really need to address. Because of course, this is what happens every single board meeting. We get the video about, you know, come on please. We get the video about how good the schools are doing. We see the banners on every school. We don't need that rhetoric every time we come to a board meeting. So if we can get down to the issues in the beginning, because personally, I feel like nothing was really addressed. Other than maybe three, four questions, nothing was really addressed. And this happens at every board meeting. By the time three, four questions get addressed, it's time to leave. Everybody's looking at the clock. I mean, come on.
Okay, ma'am, we heard you. Okay, now, I think that tonight, I think some of the things that they showed you needed to be brought to your attention because there has been this attack on the school board. And you all need to know the truth. That's what that part was about. Wait a second, wait a second, wait a second. Wait a second, wait a second. That really needs, that needs to start getting out, okay? That needs to start getting out where people know the truth. Because when you beat the Star Legend, it's only giving you the political side of it. Wait, let me finish. Let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. What they're doing is bringing this to your attention to say, here's what's really happening. Now, I would want to defend myself too, to say to the people that here's what's really happening. Don't believe what you heard. Here are the facts. Listen, here's an independent source who has no ties to either group. He's basing this upon the report. He's basing it upon the findings. And here's what he came up with. Now, let me finish, let me finish. Let me finish, let me finish. Let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. Here's the beginning of it. Now, we got that out the way, okay? Now, all the guys, you have to go through that, but they really need to bring it up to the teachers. Now, from this point on, exactly what you said is really what we all need to start doing. At the next meeting, they don't have to go through that again, okay? They had to tonight. They don't have to do that again. Now we can get down to business. So we did accomplish something because we got that out the way.
But every board meeting is gonna be, every board meeting, we see that same video.
Can I address that? There's a difference between a town hall meeting and a board of education meeting. A board of education meeting is a business meeting that's held in public with a slot for public speaking. Not a question and answer session. We hear your concerns and we address them to the best of our ability. But it's not an open meeting. It's a business meeting conducted in public. So this isn't a business meeting.
Right, okay, so the next shouldn't have been shown and we should've got straight to the...
What I encourage all of us to do, so that everyone's questions can be answered fairly, is we read the questions that were written. So let's get to it, let's do it.
Can I, can I answer? Now that we've done it to you, what is your concern? Is it the video or do you have an educational concern? Because that's what I'm interested in. Are you worried about playing the video? Or are you worried about someone leaving the school?
As the moderator, I'm saying to everyone tonight that we got through that. Now, that milk is already spilled. Let's move forward. Let's move forward now. I'm gonna give a hint to you, but let's move forward. Now, we've gotten that out the way, okay? Now, however dreadful it was, or here we go again. Well, again, you said there are two different types of meeting. Tonight is not a board meeting. Tonight is for you all. So the next time for me, it will be good for you all, okay?
Can I answer his question to me though? I do have an educational question. The questions that I have are the same questions that a lot of the parents had, but where you wouldn't really allow us to elaborate on, you know, pretty much going further into those questions because you want to get to other questions. So my questions are the same. For example, if they have school, the North Flats school right behind PM, why, if that's supposed to be their neighborhood school or if that's a school that they live near too, why aren't they able to go to those schools and are still sent to school 203 for a payment?
See, your question was answered. You have the same question.
It wasn't elaborating on, you guys were able to, not really, not to the full extent that I wanted it to be.
I offer you a vicinity, exactly, right after the meeting, so I can fully elaborate the answer. Just for, you can have as many questions to answer.
If I may say something. We understand, this all came up because the public are saying they didn't have an opportunity to express themselves at the board meeting. If you remember, we called for this meeting because we feel it's important. This is where we want it to be. You see, we don't want it to be there because that's where we do our business. That's where we vote, okay? That's the forum for that, okay? So this piece was missing and that's what we're trying to create here. Now, the fact that that video, you don't like it, I understand you don't like it. Or maybe you've seen. But you know what? We feel that it's important, okay? Giving the comments, we talk to people all over the city all the time. To some of those folks, it may be important. And we feel that it has been, okay? So it's important to a lot of people and we feel that there's a place for it. And I respect your opinion, I really do. But I ask that you understand that other, to other people, it may be important. We could probably be here and discuss our school district till 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night, okay? But that's not fair to everyone either. So we intend to have other meetings. This is not going to be the last meeting. That I can tell you.
I just want to say something. As for somebody that graduated from Elizabeth High School, then went on to Rutgers and graduated from Rutgers, I actually have the privilege of seeing the differences between the upper academy and Folsie Academy. And I don't really have a question. I just have a hope for Elizabeth High School because I do want to be proud of the high school that I came from. And I do want to be proud. First, my suggestion is that everybody get off the defensive side. Let's not try, nothing's an attack. And I feel like when I come to these board meetings, it becomes a thing because I feel like, well, if I go to this town hall meeting or board meeting, I feel that everyone's on the defense. I think once we get our private agendas, political agendas, defensive sides away and we can really focus on what's important to the students, and I feel like that is what Elizabeth is lacking. You can have number one schools, Blue River Schools, but if the focus are not on the students, then you're failing them. And in reality, you know, it's disheartening almost, you know? It makes me not want to go back to it so that, you know, he can work in the board meetings. Because it's like, I don't want to be on the defensive side. And I think that for you guys, my only comment for you guys is to say... And I think that for you guys, my only comment for you guys is to not be on the defensive side because, you know, you're coming, like, all of your questions, all of that, it's the tears people and it brings us on the defensive side. If you're truly being an advocate for education, then there shouldn't be a defensive side, there should be an open side. And one other thing I would like to say is for the future of Elizabeth Board of Education, I know I'm gonna say the wrong thing, but I would like to see a more of a relationship with the city. And the reason why I say that is because there is power in numbers. Like you said, it takes a village to raise its child. It's the parents, the cities, and the school board. This political thing that's going on, which I'm, I don't know, I was oblivious too, so I came back, is breaking our school system, breaking the connection to our students. I'd love to do prevention work, I wanna get into schools and find out about alcohol rate and drug levels, but I can't because, you know, there's this thing going on between the Board and the city. Let's start focusing the innocent children and maybe, you know, we can take pride in number one, and everybody can take pride in that, everybody can take pride in our children that's taken. And the parent system is very important. All schools should be promoting education. I don't care where it is, low income, high income, Elmore, downtown, all schools should be promoting education, all should be challenging students. And that's what we gotta say.
Reverend, I'm gonna respond, okay? I totally agree. I got your point. And to the young lady here as well, I think one of the reasons why we were struggling with showing the video, we were struggling with how we wanted to do this, was because we truly didn't want it to be another board meeting. And I do, I do understand where you're coming from with that. And some of the things that we did show beforehand, we were hoping that we could use that to maybe answer some of the questions that other people also may have had relating to what the school's doing and so on and so forth. So now that I've heard you, you know, we will definitely look at about the way we need to go about running town hall meetings. Not to say that we won't do the same thing, but because there are people who do want to see that part of it as well. So I definitely hear your concerns and I understand where you're coming from. And as far as the other young lady, great job graduating from Rutgers, great job. And being, you know, being that you mentioned some things in regards to the relationship with, you know, the board and the city. I remember when I first became a board member, and the first thing I said was, "We need to have a relationship with the city." Totally agree with you. Every board member here totally agrees with you. We have tried. We have tried. There are another things we have done that, that just...
I'll be the door, I'll be the Elizabeth for Life Committee Coordinator, and what we do is prevention, alcohol, tobacco, and abuse. Ron Dunn, actually, a member of Elizabeth for Life Committee, I want to have a connection because a lot of, you know, we had a display crash charge, like, you know, pieces worrying about, you know, underage teen drinking, but I felt that the school board needed to get involved. We are, we need to set connection and I'll be the, I'll be the door for you.
Well, that's fantastic, and we know, we, we always have a door to work with any, any other body of government. And we have never, ever, and I have to say, as far as I know, we have never let anyone out. We have always tried to have a relationship, whether some people wanna see it or not, we have. And I don't know if there's other things that other board members want to add to that, but we always will continue to try and have a relationship with other government bodies.
Okay, I wanna do the last question.
There has been no bigger advocate for working with the city of Elizabeth than my colleague Carlos Trillo. Carlos, on many occasions, has gone to city council meetings and during their public portion, has implored the city council and the mayor's office, extended an open hand to come to the Elizabeth Board of Education and work with us, form a partnership with us. We've realized that we can't do it by ourselves, we need their help. And this gentleman right here has gone many times and asked for their help. Let's all go. Let's all go because he's asked, he's asked and I've seen him myself.
Well, when is the next court, when is the next city? But now, if you go there, you have to do exactly what you did tonight. You have to go there sensible, you have to go there express your concerns, not so that they become only defensive, here's what we're trying to do. And I think that works so much better. Let me get this, let me get this last question because this was great tonight, and this was a learning experience. This was the first time we've had this down here, and we can figure out what we can do better next time, what we can add, what we can take away. And we can't do this unless we all come together and do what we did tonight. This was a great... Okay, I wanna hear this question.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jose Tassi, my daughter's in school number three. She's a kindergarten right now. I'm a little concerned about meetings with parents and teachers, and teachers and parents do it in nighttime. All meetings is going to take. I would like to tell us two, three main meetings, parents and teachers in the nighttime. I'm not allowed to do it in the morning, they work in the morning, most of the time it works. But I'd be willing to go in the morning for one group of parents and the nighttime for another group of parents. That's the first one. Now, we're talking about a lot, uh, school, the talent school, academic school, and regular school. Now we're separating my level. Academic, which is highest standards, regular school, which is my daughter's school number three, and talent school. Talent school is acceptable, I believe, because if you got good grades, I'm looking for my daughter the same thing, they can go talent school because they really have high standard because you separate the student with high score to get a reputation. I understand that. But why everybody, including you, Mr. Trillo, once your daughter goes to school 28, I mean 29, 26, or there? Are there anything, when I read that, 26, I don't remember the name? Why everybody wants to go there? Why everybody wants to attend the children there? I've found every single year, since my daughter started school, tried to find out the permissions, how the people are part of the school, how the people get involved in the, in the system. And then, so why does the school meet higher standards than the school number three? Why are the schools not at the same? I believe that this is the problem, it's only one. So why, I'm finding to go my daughter's school number 29. Why to fight, put a load in, I understand load in, okay? Because the school's beautiful, I got a lot of places to enjoy, like football, soccer games, all the activities and activities. Why the teachers is highly qualified, high qualified in those schools, not in school number three? I'm not specific number three, I'm talking about school number 13, probably three, one, all different kinds of schools. Because we got only four academic schools that meet the highest standards. So why if it's, it's a successful in those academy, why that example you put in those schools, why not give it to everybody the same? Why not give it the same? I don't have, I don't have to change my daughter's school three, which is outside the school, right? For different reasons. It's no space, it's like a little complex, right? But if the education, the teachers really prepared to teach my daughters, my daughter's staying there. I don't care about soccer field, I don't care about, uh, playground all this time. Because why in there, why go to the school? I didn't have much of that benefits, but my teacher's pretty good. And I didn't know, I don't need a lot of things like to be capable to succeed in my grades. I don't, I don't understand that. Why, why is it like that? Why, it's a load in the school?
I would like to answer one by one. First of all, the education in Elizabeth, they all have the same curriculum, with every district in the state of New Jersey is required to have what is called the core curriculum standards, whether it's in regular...